Good evening. I wish to welcome everyone to this evening's board meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners this Monday, March 20th of 2023. If you would please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If we could observe a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. An administrative note for those on the planning board as well as those wishing to sit in on the planning board's meeting. Due to the fact that we have a very spacious facility here and we have no other rooms for the planning board to meet, they're going to leave here and go back to the Civic Center. So if you're here to sit in on the planning board proceedings, as soon as we excuse them here, they are going to leave here and go to the Civic Center. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. Everyone has their agenda in front of them. Is there any additional agenda items they need to add?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask to move item 6A under New Business to the Consent Agenda, please. That's surplus property of Hall Street.
Without objection, I'd offer 5A, a resolution to the consent agenda.
Okay.
And just for the record, if I may...
We do need to act on the property, don't we?
Yeah, I think it can go under consent with the way the resolution's worded, but I did want the board to know for the Hall Street, we did receive a third offer after we published the agenda from Miss Wumble and the amount of 6,500, but it still doesn't change the staff's recommendation to accept the 10,000. So I think the board can move it to consent, just knowing there's the three offers and accept the 10,000.
And the resolution regarding the consolidation, can we move that to the consent agenda?
If the board so chooses, they can. The board just has to take action for sure.
Without objection, I'd move to do that.
Okay.
And on the consent agenda, if we could remove 2J.
And on the consent agenda, we're going to remove 2J. That'll make 2K as 2J.
One further action, Mr. Chairman, is 2K, I'd like to take it off of the consent agenda. 2K.
All right, we're going to move 2K down to Old Business?
Yep.
That fits.
All right, 2K is Old Business. Oh my goodness, my... Could you imagine doing this on this thing? Okay. Have motion to move to the consent agenda, item 6A and item 5A. Any further?
Just kidding.
And we're just moving these to the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're moving 2K to Old Business. And we're removing item 2J from the consent agenda. Any other additions or changes to the agenda, please? Seeing there are none, any... Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to accept the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That takes care of that. Moving right into the next item on the agenda is public hearing and Amy McNeil.
And before...
Oh, there she is.
Before we get started on this public hearing, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, if we could, after further review with Mr. Lovick, if we could just recuse him from this matter, I believe he's asking for recusal on the participation of the public hearing.
Understood.
So moved.
Motion's been made to recuse Commissioner Lovick from this discussion on the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Commissioners, planning board members and staff, this information is on pages 111 through 118 of the Commissioner's Agenda. Due to the increased popularity of mobile food vendors or food trucks, staff has received several inquiries regarding the creation of a food truck park at various locations within our jurisdictions. This would be a permanent location that people would frequent to dine from various mobile food vendors that are on site. The mobile food vendors would move in and out of this location, but the site, with all of the required site improvements such as parking, permanent restroom facilities, recycling, refuse area, et cetera, would remain at the fixed location. The food truck park would be owned and operated as a private business with regular hours and days of operation, and there could be several at different locations zoned general commercial CD2 and highway commercial HC around our area depending on demand. There's specific standards for this new use that are provided within your agenda for reference, which would be in addition to any general design standards that may be applicable, such as the standard size of parking spaces and driveways and landscaping. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the standards and is prepared to provide feedback, or would you prefer that I read through them individually?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll pass on reading it individually.
Commissioner Reeves has moved to pass on reading individually. Any further discussion? All those in favor of passing on the reading, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions, concerns or additional feedback that you would like for staff or the planning board to take into consideration when reviewing this item?
Commissioner Sharp, questions?
None.
Commissioner Reeves?
By any chance, did you consult with Commissioner Connect regarding his concerns?
No, sir.
I think that would be appropriate since he registered some concerns.
I wasn't aware that he wasn't going to be here, but I'll be glad to reach out to him individually.
Yeah, I looked for him myself, but I think I would consult with him.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I have two questions. On page one, second paragraph, it says the specific standards provided below would be in addition to any general design standards that may be applicable, such as standard size of... You had mentioned that. I'm wondering if, because we've got the one UDO for the single, and then this is for the park, and part of me wonders if it should state all requirements listed below are only applicable to mobile food vendors located within the food truck park.
It can serve...
Just as... I'm just saying, because I felt, and I'm trying to think of, like the... Oh, I know one of the, the, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth bullet point down, it's talking about mobile food vendors shall... There were a few things that got brought up in this that weren't addressed in the single space one.
Okay.
And so I just kind of, I don't know, I thought maybe it'd be a little bit more uniform that might be needed, but I don't know. And then, one of the other things that came up in my thought process was, is there a standard to follow with open space seating designs? Because that... Okay.
No, ma'am. Since each site was going to be so unique, we thought that they would, we would leave that up to the designer of the project.
Okay.
And then allow staff to review and approve that.
Okay, but there's not... Okay, yeah, that was, that was written in there. And then, going to that, is there a seating requirement for the single-use food truck or the single-use mobile food vendor UDO? I didn't see that.
No, ma'am.
So I just wondered if some of these things might get... Are you, am I making sense? Sorry. Trying to figure out.
We didn't do the seating requirement for the mobile food vendor because...
Is it allowed?
That food truck would move around to different locations and be temporary, but this is a permanent facility, so we wanted to ensure that there were some outdoor seating requirements.
Oh, for sure. But would the, would the outdoor open space seating be allowed for the single-use mobile food vendor? Like if they wanted, if they were, had, if a pickup truck was carrying their food truck and they had like a couple tables or whatever they wanted to put out, is that allowed?
As long as it didn't interfere with something that's required, such as a number of required parking spaces, as long as they didn't put their tables and chairs in the handicap parking space.
Exactly.
Something like that, that's temporary, yes, ma'am, and that will be okay.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
No comments.
Commissioner Connect, I know you got here soon.
I don't have it in front of me. I don't know if anybody had mentioned it, but as I was looking through that, I think, I think a lot of things said in there, food truck, the food truck shall, the food truck shall, the food truck shall. This is a business establishment, so I think the ordinance should say the business establishment shall, the business establishment shall.
Got it.
Right? I think that was the...
Yes, sir.
...main thing. Didn't you did your stuff, right?
Yeah, I said along the lines of like only applicable to the mobile food vendors located at food truck park.
Right. And I think there were some other issues. We had the other one, but it'd be great if they had these, both these ordinances combined, you know, people can follow rules accordingly. They don't have to go for, you know, in terms of, here's our ordinance is single use, here's the one for a mobile park.
We'll take that into consideration.
Yeah, I think that's too... Thank you.
I did have one item.
Okay.
And we discussed this, a minimum of three parking spaces per food truck, trailer, cart shall be provided.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you.
One could read that to say, I can use up three spaces for my food truck, trailer and cart.
Or, or need three spaces.
What you, what you're providing is a customer's...
Yes, sir.
For each food truck will have three parking spaces.
We'll change that wording to clarify.
And again, I, I piggyback off of Commissioner Connect regarding the consolidation and, and that would be for the board.
Anything else?
Okay.
I think the board, is the boarding meeting on this tonight, or?
Yes, sir. The planning board will retire to the Civic Center where we will convene and make consideration, recommendations this evening regarding this text amendment and the mobile food vendor text amendment.
And, and review the items that we discussed at the last meeting exactly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions of the board? Seeing there are none, public hearing is now open on regard, in regards to the UDO changes for food truck park. All those in favor, please come forward. If you wish to make any statement in favor or opposed to, we do ask that you please state your name as well as your address. No one for. Anyone opposed to the food truck park UDO as presented? No one opposed. Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. We'll excuse the planning board. They are going to depart here and head to the Civic Center. You have one of the backrooms, correct?
Yeah, the auditorium.
The auditorium? Okay, the auditorium. Very comfortable, very nice. So if you have any issues with the planning board, you may sit in and observe. Have a good evening. Thank you. All right, next item on, for public hearing is the capital project financing. And if I could, Candace Iceman is here.
Good evening. In accordance with section 160A-20G of the North Carolina General Statutes, the county is required to hold a public hearing on the proposed limited obligation bond to refinance an existing installment financing agreement entered into by the county in June 2021. Notice of the public, public hearing was published in Sanford Herald on March 10th, 2023.
Any questions, Candace? Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, sir.
No questions. On behalf of the board, I am now going to open the public hearing regarding the limited option obligation bond financing agreement. All those in favor, please come forward. Please state your name as well, as well as your address. Anyone opposed? Going once, going twice. The public hearing is now closed. We do need to consider a waiving of our policy so as to take action this evening to forward the paperwork. The motion has been made to waive the policy of the board so as to continue on with the business of this public hearing.
Our financial advisors, Davenport, managed the request for proposals process and has put together a summary of proposals received and is attached to the agenda. They recommended a going with the truest 10-year par call, 20-year financing proposal at the 4.09% interest rate. The board will need to waive its policy to take action tonight, the same night as the public hearing. The board will need to award the financing to the winning bidder as well as adopt a resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the proposed financing, approving the lender and requesting the local government commission to approve the financing arrangement.
Motion's been made to waive our policy. Any further discussion?
I believe we're doing that because this is a time constraint, right?
Correct. There is a time constraint on this.
Thank you.
No further discussion? All those in favor of waiving the policy signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now that we've waived our policy, we need to approve the capital project financing agreement. Do I have a motion, please? Motions. You came back, Mrs. Iceman.
Yes, I did.
Okay, please share with us.
I was just staying up here for the remainder of the...
We need to introduce the resolution.
Okay.
Read the name of the resolution.
Where's my resolution? I've got the summary.
I offered a motion.
It's just that title that's on that bottom of the other side in bold.
A resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the proposed financing approving the lender and requesting the local government commission to approve the financing arrangement. Be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners as...
You don't need to read the entire resolution.
I don't need to read that. Just a highlight. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Who gets to go to the local government commission?
We've already had a phone conversation with them. We are good to go.
Okay, very nice. Thank you. Moving on, next item on the agenda are public comments. We have two public comments. The first one is Tamara Brogan. And again, just a reminder, you have three minutes. Please state your name as well as your address, and then you have three minutes. And the attorney will be keeping time. Time's running.
I know.
I'm just kidding.
Good evening. I'm Tamara Brogan, 404 Petty Road, and I'm here tonight. I am the executive director of Family Promise of Lee County, but I'm also chair of S3 Housing Connect. And you can see, we have our little umbrella here to do a little demonstration of all the agencies that are involved with S3 Housing Connect. We've been around since 2017, and there's a lot of us, as you can see, that are involved, and it's a very good organization that has, Task Force has come together in Lee County to help alleviate homelessness as best we can in Lee County. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here to advocate for a transparent process when funding is available for local nonprofits. In regards to ARPA funds, county funds, or any other future funding that might come to Lee County, please open the process to all county nonprofits and give clear instructions for the local agencies to apply. And as you can see, all the agencies that we have here that are involved with S3 Housing Connect, one of the great things about this task force is that we all work together very well. We're all doing everything we can to help families and individuals that are experiencing homelessness throughout Lee County. We work together, and we all have our own special areas where we assist families. Some of us work with veterans. We have some that are work, CUOC, that works with food insecurities, a lot of community action. We have Salvation Army, OMI Outreach, Veteran Nation, Sanford Housing Authority, Daymark, which helps with mental health. We also have the Bread Basket, Brick Capital, Family Promise, United Way, Bread of Life Ministry, Sand Hill Center. So you can see Partners for Impact, Habitat for Humanity. So there's a lot of us that are coming together to work together to assist those in need throughout our community. We're trying hard to serve those that need help in our community and become, for them to become self-sufficient and prosperous, right? That's the goal, is for them to become self-sufficient and to be able to give back to the community themselves. So we're, we're trying hard on all different fronts to help the people that we serve. So in order for us to fulfill our mission and to be able to help those in needs of the community, we, we are nonprofits, and so we do need support and help. And so we ask for you to continue to help and support us so that we can support those that need our help throughout the community. And the funding process is important for us because, you know, that's what keeps us running. That's what keeps us able to help other people. So I ask that going forward, that the funding process be transparent and be able, able, open to all agencies in Lee County so that we can apply for funding, so that we can continue to do our work. And that way, interested agencies are able to apply. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gabby Marillo Anderson, 546 Linear Farm Road. I am going to read straight from my phone because I don't want to get cut off by the time constraints. Although I have been involved with S3 since its inception, which was nearly seven years ago, tonight I stand before you as a private citizen and a private business owner. I own a real estate company, which means I put people in homes every day. I'm a guardian ad litem, which means I represent kids in the foster care system. I'm also on the Government and Political Issues Committee for Raleigh Regional. In fact, I'll be at Legislative Week next week to discuss affordable housing issues with our state legislature. I preface my remarks with this to provide a foundation for you so that you understand I'm well-versed in local government, housing and homelessness. We live in a thriving community full of amazing individuals, like many behind me, who choose to work daily on making it a better community for all. But what ha, what would happen if these citizens just decided to stop? What if nonprofits and churches close their doors to those in need? Would our local government step up then? Why is homelessness considered our issue and not yours when you were elected to represent this community and its diverse demographics? I understand some of you may not believe in the D-word, yet here I stand. You are entrusted to make decisions that are in the best interest of the people while putting your own personal agendas and interests aside. I personally don't subscribe to the Bible, but it's been stated that some of you do, so I wanted to highlight some reminders from your book, Romans 12:13. Let each of you look not only to his own interests, but also to the interest of others. John 3:17, "Someone who has worldly means sees a brother in need and refuses him compassion. How can the love of God remain in him?" S3 is comprised of various local organizations that shelter, feed and clothe individuals experiencing homelessness. Additionally, there are medical and mental health services provided. Our homeless population aren't just drug addicts, as so eloquently put in the past. They are veterans, college students, single parents and children who have aged out of foster care with nowhere to go. It is undoubtedly your duty to help those in need in our community. So tonight I have two simple requests. Open up any funding applications so that all nonprofits can apply, which provides an equal opportunity for all, and join your fellow commissioner, Bill Carver, in working together and attending our meetings to find a solution that strengthens our community. We meet conveniently on Zoom once a month. You always have a seat at our table. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the county of Lee County CCCC Library, Lee Early College Classroom Facility renovations and additional capital project budget ordinance amendment to change the name of the project to the E Eugene Moore Manufacturing and Biotech Solutions Center. Who's got this one?
Mr. Carver pulled it.
Could be me, because I asked you to...
I was going to say that went to the consent agenda.
No, it came off.
Yeah, it came off the consent agenda.
Just kidding.
Yeah.
Oh, that one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, my concern with this has to do with a little bit with the history of how this ordinance was put in place in the first place. The name originally was CCCC Library, Lee Early College Classroom Facility renovations and additional capital project budget ordinance. Okay, so focusing on the idea that it was addressing a need for the community college library to upgrade to be in concert with accreditation requirements. The other thing is a longstanding promise to the Lee Early College to make a space that's permanent for them on the, the campus. If we change the name completely to the Eugene Moore Manufacturing and Biotech Solutions, those commitments that were made originally for this capital fund, in my thinking, are submerged. Now, I've had a chance to talk to the county manager, and there may be some information that I'm not aware of that has to do with an MOU that explains why we're changing this. But I, I want to make sure we understand that that original $12 million was set aside for those first two purposes, and that's why we named that ordinance that. And I just want to preserve the idea that we're still either committed to that or that we've been released from the requirement to, to assist the college in financing those things. So I'm turning it over to Ms. Minner. In all fairness, I noticed this today. She was helpful in trying to help me explain it, but that she's done a little bit more research, and maybe she has something else to add.
After receiving Mr. Carver's call and the county attorney and myself, or county attorney was able to find where we adopted a memorandum of understanding with the community college as of the 19th of May 2021 wherein that they acknowledged that there would be funding eventually for the Lee Early College program and understand that they will dispose of two buildings it owns in Lee County Industrial Park. And once the college receives the necessary approvals from the State Board of Community Colleges, it will dispose of the two properties as quickly as possible. The proceeds from the disposal of those properties must go back to the county's capital fund to offset future requests of the college in requesting financing for the capital project for the CCCC Library, Lee Early College Classroom Facility renovations and additions. In addition, the Community College Board of Trustees adopted a resolution on the 14th day of April acknowledging similar plans.
My question is, originally, the ordinance essentially promised money for these two events. These, as I understand it with my conversations with Julian Philpot, who's the chairman of the trustees, is that these sources of money are uncertain. We don't know how much money is going to be released from, from the sale of those properties. There's also some ideas that the General Assembly somehow will make sure that, or the General Assembly will be requested to provide, provide some capital funds for these two projects. It just seems to me that if I was on the other side of it as it relates to trying to get these two projects done, and I was asked to give up this $12 million with the promise that maybe we'll work it out some other way, then, then I might be a little bit cautious about that. I, I think my specific request would be to, to table this for tonight and to ask, to ask the... ask the trustees to come up with some sort of commitment to how they feel these things are going to be actually guaranteed.
Is that a motion, sir?
Yes, it is.
Motion to table item under Old Business, item 5A, to adopt the County of Lee County Library, excuse me, Lee CCCC Library and Lee Early College Classroom Facility. Any further discussions? Commissioner Sharp?
I mean, is this just for clarification on...
Yeah, yeah. Basically, we've got $12 million that we're focusing completely on the Moore Center now. And I would just like clarification.
Just for clarification also, we already spent over 71, excuse me, $7,100,000 to acquire the property.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Reeves.
Are you taking up this issue on behalf of the trustee board, or have they had any concerns registered to the county manager?
I believe there have been some discussions. Ultimately, one of my concerns would be, now that we are no longer providing that money at a later date...
That's not quite correct. We have an MOU.
Right. We have an MOU that talks about where else the money might come.
There are two facilities in the industrial park that belong to the community college. When this whole initiative started, President Chapman had given me a well-versed, because I knew of those two properties. We can't move the students into a solid building, which is the Wilkinson Building, until we move the Wilkinson Building personnel into the new Moore Center.
Right.
We can't move the folks out of the library that are not associated with the library until they can move into the Moore Center. Once those two processes have been done, then we're going to renovate those two buildings, expand the library to meet the requirements, move the Lee Early College into a solid building, the Wilkinson Building, and then we can liquidate, oh, excuse me, and then move those entities that are out in the industrial park into the Moore Center. Then we can liquidate those properties. So, there's a whole lot of things that have to happen, and this is just one of those steps.
I think the issue is where's the money coming from? In other words, we have some estimates of how much money is going to be released by the selling of those properties. We believe that inflation is going to improve it, but we don't know what that is.
I can tell you there's a demand for those buildings at this moment. And the sooner we can vacate those buildings, well, excuse me, the community college can vacate those buildings and move them to the Moore Center, then we'll have them to put on the market. I mean, it's the market.
Do we have an estimate on what their value might be on them?
I know it was shared with us, and I don't have it. I mean, to be honest with you, we've had Mr. Brown here present us with just houses and what they've increased in the past three years. So, they're definitely in demand. I don't have an estimate. Mr. Brown's here?
We can get that information.
We'll have to get that information.
What the tax values are on them.
Well, the other question I have regarding that money is, it comes back to the community college or to our general fund or what? The selling of the buildings?
My understanding is it will go back to the community college, but they should turn it over for the project. And that's their understanding from their resolution.
Well, then Commissioner Carver, are you, are you concerned that they won't use the money for that purpose or...?
I think this is all being done in good faith. The issue is, the difference in the dollars were promised, what, two years ago, three years ago, and now we're exchanging it for dollars that might be made available. And even as the discussion tonight suggests, we don't even know what kind of an estimate that sale of those properties are going to release. The other argument is that we're going to go to the General Assembly and get capital funds that are promised, quote, for this kind of thing. Again, those aren't guaranteed. And I just remember that back when we designated this $12 million for it, it was very specific. Now, the other aspect of it is that eventually you would hope that as we progress and people forget things one or another, that the community college wouldn't come back to us and say, "Well, gee whiz, we'd like a capital improvement project to do precisely these things again since we don't have it." I don't know. In the end, I would be satisfied with simply putting it on the table, allowing a discussion to come back with a clear explanation as to why we're not, why we're changing the wording. The changing of the wording looks very innocent, but in fact, it changes who gets those dollars.
It doesn't change the MOU, does it?
No, sir. To me, it does not.
Right.
From my understanding, I was thinking the $12 million was going to be before the Moore Center came about to build the new library. And now that they had the understanding once we got the Moore Center that they could free up other pieces of the building to put them in, that shouldn't cost $12 million to renovate, I wouldn't think.
That's right. And that's why the money for the Moore Center was about $7 million, and the remainder would take care of the renovations of putting the Lee Early College and changing the library the way we had thought.
Commissioner Vorbeck, questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect.
No, I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Motion's been made to table the item in discussion.
Does the tabling change timeframes on anything?
Is there a time constraint on this?
No, sir. We were just trying to clarify it because the project has switched from what was originally intended. So, we were just trying to get clarification on the project ordinance so that when it's looked at, people will understand what the project is actually for.
I've got one other question.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if the college has made a commitment to use that money for the purpose you're discussing? The sale of the buildings?
I honestly don't know. I know that, in all fairness, they realize that until the people, as the chairman has said, until the movement of people in the current buildings happens to the Moore Center, they can't, they can't even make their request to the General Assembly. So...
Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling the item in discussion, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Raise your hand, please. If you oppose tabling the item. Motion carries, oh, excuse me, the motion fails. Thank you.
You need to take a motion on the actual...
Say again?
You'll need to take action on that.
Okay. Hold on. Here we go. All right, and we have the resolution, be it ordained by the Lee County Board of Commissioners, at the following budget for the CCCC Library and Lee Early College Classroom Facility renovations. In addition, amendment to change the project name to the E Eugene Moore Manufacturing and Biotech Solutions Center is hereby approved and adopted. Do I have a motion to accept it?
So, move.
Motion's been made to accept the, yeah, right here, the title's five miles long. But that's okay. The amendment to change the name of the project to the Eugene Moore Manufacturing Biotech Solutions. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed?
I think this would be a good time for everybody to get together and figure out what it is we are trying to accomplish here.
I understand, and the motion passed. Can I get a sign of those were for? Raise your hand, please.
Hold on.
For the resolution.
The last.
Yes. Okay. And then those opposed?
I think Mr. Carver just wants clarity, make sure funds are available according to what we said before. I think it gets a little mixed up in the wording, but I think we can get that clarified.
I will reach out to the community college and make sure, to the best of our ability, that we can get clarification.
A lot of things have to happen, and I understand the concern.
Sometimes you're like, "We'll do it, then things don't get done." But I think this is one for clarification. Thank you.
For clarification.
Do we have clarification on that vote?
The, there were...
Six, one.
Six to one.
In favor of?
Passing the renaming of the project to the E Eugene Moore Manufacturing Biotech Solutions Center.
Do you need a tabling vote, too?
No, we haven't.
We got that one.
We got that.
It is a lot of moving parts. A lot of things have to happen. The Moore Center has, I know we've provided them money for renovating the Moore Center for the truck driving and some of the other, and plus, we had the cleanup, the DEQ cleanup and the permit.
We've actually raised the project from the original $12 million to $14 million previously. And tonight, the financing that you're doing is going ahead and financing the refinancing of the property and the truck driving school.
Okay.
There are two other pieces of this that have not been bid yet that will be coming back for separate lobs issued once we can get far enough along on those and have those out to bid. So, but they also have a much bigger, bigger project in mind of which they've asked for assistance from the state legislature.
Correct.
So, you know, it's like you have said, there are lots of moving pieces, and until those pieces fall into place, we may not have all the answers. However, we do have the MOU and their resolution that they are committed to the Lee Early College because that was a very, we understood that was a very important thing to the board when the project shifted and stuff.
I think the concern, Mr. Carver, sometimes is that commitment may have a long timeframe on it.
But I will reach out to the community colleges and make sure, and I will also get the tax values of those two pieces of property in the industrial park and report back to you.
Yeah, I'd like to see just a summary of what we are.
Yeah, not 20 years down the road yet. We'll get to it. I think that's, I think that's his concern.
Well, it's contingent on four buildings being vacated.
Understood. But after those things...
Those non-library entities in the library, everyone in the Wilkinson Building moves out, and then the two facilities out in the industrial park. And hopefully, everything will move along.
Your explanation was good and clear. I'm just saying, I like to see it in writing.
What about the temporary classrooms they're in now? Is that owned or leased?
Good question.
And if so, if it's owned, then that could be part of it also.
Wasn't that, wasn't that surplus for some of the high school stuff that they used to have?
I'm trying to remember if they got property, they got those from the school or if they done some else. I'll check on it and verify that.
I don't think they're from the school because it's such a huge building.
But there's, as I think, remember, it's still a public school, so I think the public school had some of those that they used.
Well, they also moved some from WB Wicker whenever we converted that to the school site.
That's right, because that was a CCC facility.
Right. They may have been ones that moved from there.
There was those out there.
If I make an observation, this conversation is interesting in the sense that it brings up a whole bunch of issues that became more transparent by just making the motion. And I think what the commissioner over here is saying, if we see something in writing that really specifies what we're doing, it might be helpful because there are a lot of moving parts. So, I appreciate the discussion. I think we're probably going in the right direction.
And it was oversight on my part, knowing that I know all the moving parts and didn't think that that was an issue. So, thank you for bringing that. Forward, Commissioner Carver. All right, moving on. Let's see, old business, we just finished, new business, got moved to consent agenda, managers' report, monthly financial, sales, tax reports. Ms. Eisman is back again.
The monthly financial report for February is in your agenda. Please remember that sales tax revenues run three months behind. Tax collections as a percentage of the budget are at 97.71%, which is slightly lower when compared to the same period last fiscal year. The expenditure target for February would be 66.67%. There are several departments that are over this target due to the inclusion of encumbrances. If encumbrances are excluded, finance and strategic services remain over due to the payment of annual agreements. Juvenile detention is over due to the quantity and stay duration of juveniles. EMS is over due to the purchase of the CPR machines. Planning is over due to the third quarter payment for services to the city. And human services nonprofits are over due to the lump sum payment to the North Carolina Veterans Memorial. The December sales tax report is also attached, and we are 9.76% above the same period last fiscal year.
Any questions of Ms. Eisman? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Carver?
No.
Thank you, ma'am. And managers' report, please.
Okay. First, I wanted to update you on the ongoing projects. As we were just talking about the Moore Training Facility with CCCC, Terri Quest continues to work on the mitigation plan for the facility. They're continuing to run their vacuuming projects. And as you know, tonight, we have started on the refinancing, and the note on that Morelly facility comes to June 1st, but the plan is to actually pay that note off in May as we move through with that financing. As far as the multi-sports complex, eight contractors have been notified that they were pre-qualified for the project, to bid on that project. We recently met with H&amp;H to review plans and look at specifications for different products in those, that facility. The Department of Transportation has indicated their intent to approve the connection to Highway 42 based on the current design. However, this access is contingent on a negotiated fee to be paid by the county to DOT for controlled access to Highway 42. Contracts are expected to go out to bid by Memorial Day with a bid date prior to July 1st. Staff is also working with Davenport and Associates and the Bond Council on the financing of this project. Horton Pool, the bathhouse, is anticipated to be completed by the end of March. The sidewalk connecting the bathhouse to the playground was installed on February 24th, and the pool perimeter plumbing and backfill was completed at the end of February. Plumbing has also been connected from the pool to the bathhouse, and new concrete slab will be poured in the pool equipment room over the plumbing installation. There is a concern regarding pool construction related to the deadline for completion due to the anticipated rain that comes with the season, as well as lack of adequate staffing on the contractor's part. Currently averaging two workers each day, they are on site. So, we are trying to stay on top of that and make sure that we do meet our deadlines. Phase one and two of the parks projects, DEQ findings have been submitted, and Withers and Ravenel has contacted JMT to get them to remedy some of the report's findings in a good faith effort. However, due to the time that has passed since phase one closeout, some of that work may fall on the county if JMT does not remedying. We are waiting to close out DEQ for phase one before beginning phase two on the parks. Temple's playground delivery is six months out. The shelter restroom building is eight weeks out, and as soon as those are put in place, Duke Energy will be out to connect the service. Jeremy Thomas has located the lines and is now drawing sewer and water connections to the bathroom building, and those will need to go out to bid. So, we should see those projects picking up in the next two to three months for those parks. On the library building project, Vines Architecture has provided staff with preliminary estimates along with ideas for potential cost-saving options. Once those have been confirmed by Sammet and Sanford Contractors and reviewed by staff, an update will be provided to the board on April 3, 2023 at that meeting. So, we've asked that the Board of Trustees for the library also attend that meeting so they can hear the same presentation at the same time the board does. And then we are also working with Jeremy Thomas Engineering to explore options for off-site sewer connection. At the Historic Courthouse project, there's a request for approval of the contract with Hobbs Architect has been included on this agenda, and the contract is contingent on the state historic preservation office's final approval to move forward. Again, we are trying to prioritize what we will be able to do with those funds and meet as many of the needs at the courthouse as we can. That's it on the capital projects. If there's any questions before I move to the budget?
Questions for the manager. Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Carver?
Is JMT also the contractor for Horton Pool?
Yes, a part of it. They're on the bathhouse.
They're on the bathhouse, bathhouse. There is a separate, Southeast Aquatics is the contractor for the pool piece.
Okay, but they're responsible, JMT is responsible for the bathhouse, is that right? Thank you.
Okay, on the budget, um, we have received the budgets from all county departments and have been meeting, staff has been meeting with those departments for the past week and this week. The first draft of the pay plan studies should be received. Well, actually, we have a meeting scheduled Friday to go through the first draft of the pay plan, so we'll be, been able to incorporate that. Um, we are looking to begin working on the schedule for budget work sessions. So I do need to know from the board if you will want to do as you've done the last couple of years and have every department come in and meet with you, or if you want to do a selection of departments, just so we know how to start scheduling those.
Pleasure of the board regarding budget.
I'd like to make a comment about that. I, I will tell you that I gained an awful lot of understanding about what's going on in individual departments by listening to how they want to spend their money. The format was well-presented last year, and I would encourage us to do it again, understanding that, uh, the, i- i- if the presentations are made, commissioners can make up their mind whether or not they want to be here or not. But I, I, I did appreciate the fact that it was formalized, and, um, there were good answers to some questions that I had.
Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Vorbik?
Um, do you have to open it to every department, or could we? Could it be a few that, like, might have a slight change, like a high, much higher change in what they're requesting versus the previous year?
So you're for a few?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Reeves?
Only the ones in trouble.
Only ones in trouble. Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Sharp, minus the city.
I would tend to agree with Mr. Reeves.
Commissioner Knack?
Pleasure of the board.
Okay. I guess the, uh, consensus is, is those that are in trouble.
I will, I will say that I will, as we continue to work through this, I will be glad to check with you and see which ones you think need to come in. If that's okay with the board, I'll work with the commissioner, the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, um, my personal preference is I would like to talk to the individual department. Should I just talk to the manager and set up meetings with the departments? Is that the, what I'm hearing you say?
We, as the board, should be doing that, not as individuals, with each department. Do we, with, okay, here we go. Do I have a motion to meet with every department on the budget su- process? Motion's been made to meet with every department on the budget process. All those, and any further discussion?
Yeah, that we have a need to meet with everyone.
Okay, that's your question.
I can tell you that we've had thirty new positions requested across the board with, and then twenty, twenty, I believe, reclassifications above and beyond the pay plan. So, um, there's only a lot of departments who are up, but it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, that you want to meet with them all.
Any, any further discussion on meeting with every?
Is that a yes? Is that a yes, we need to meet with all of them, or?
Questions?
You can advise, I think she's just saying it probably is going to be multiple, almost all of them.
Do you want to give us a list of the ones you consider?
We're, we still have a motion.
No.
Let's finish this motion.
What I was taking that is, it's yes, to the degree of, it sounds like there's a lot of positions and a lot of changes possibly in the departments.
Well, that's why we have a manager.
That's right. So, I mean, that's the thing, you know, I can put a recommended budget together and let you then see that. I just know if you do want to meet with everybody, we probably need to do a schedule.
We have a motion for that right now before the board.
What's that?
Yeah, you.
We move to, are we, the motion is, we wish to meet with every department chair regarding the budget process. That is the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Discussion, please. Um, the one thing that's being kind of submerged here was the comment that I made about how transparent these conversations were, what the benefits to the individual commissioners were by having a better understanding of what departments are doing. And, um, again, commissioners don't have to be here if they don't want to. Yet, based on your comment, you're saying, well, gee, if we don't do it for everybody, then I can't have access to the departments in, in order to get this kind of understanding from them. Uh, I think that's kind of short-sighted. So again, what we're asking is that we have these meetings, and if commissioners don't want to attend, they don't have to. Anyway, thank you.
Again, this is a board. We act as a board, we vote as a board.
Look, I, I'm not objecting, if you want to bring them all, bring them all. I just want to see the ones that you think I should be concerned with.
We can come to that.
Yeah.
What's that?
Okay. All those in favors of meeting with each department chair signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? No. Do I need a show of hands?
I don't think so.
Yes.
No.
Show of hands, all those in favor? Show of hands, please. We have two. Those opposed? Okay, thank you. So we will go with, as Commissioner Reeves said, the ones in trouble.
Oh.
Well, I don't know about the word trouble.
I'm being sarcastic. I'm being sarcastic, Nancy. Richard.
How are you making a selection of the people that we're gonna talk to?
We'll leave that to the manager.
Manager gets to make it in our mind, okay? Thank you.
The next question I ask is, we have the big budget books that we have done every year for the last couple of years for everybody. I just ask that if you do not, if you want the whole big budget book, to please let me know. Otherwise, when those departments come in to meet with you, I will make the appropriate portions available. And there will always be one book available for you at the, um, Summit Building. So if you do not want one, but you just want us to send you the appropriate sections per work session, please let me know so that we don't put that whole book together and.
Just as long as I have the big book for the, the young commissioners. Okay. We can.
As long as we always have one at our budget meeting.
Yeah, well, you'll always, I'll have mine and the other one at least, okay?
Is this our individual request? If I can have the book, I'd, I'd like it, it really helped me.
Thank you. And if anybody else decides they want one, then please just let me know, otherwise we'll make sure you have the appropriate sections. Okay, thank you for that. Branding and corporate identity was the next thing I wanted to talk to you about. Was prior to the pandemic, um, the county had begun a branding and corporate identity project. During that project, the board decided to use the county seal as the official logo for the county. Staff would now like to incorporate some additional logos for the departments using colors from our seal, keeping it consistent. If the board is amiable to this idea, staff will bring designs and concepts to the board at a future meeting for approval, but we just want to make sure that it's okay with the board that we're even looking into doing something in addition to our, just the county seal.
What do you, what do you, what do you, give us an example?
In other words, that Parks and Rec would have a logo in addition to the county seal that they could use, that would be more Parks and Rec oriented, um, help the, the library has, library already has a logo that we've allowed them to continue to use, but we would like to be able to add other departments. But the concept would be that it would always have Lee County Government tagged to it.
Why can't you do the reverse?
Being.
Well, you have the Lee County Seal and you have Parks and Rec tagged to it.
Well, it would be, if you, the concept in my mind is to have them, if you use just the seals, that both have to be on something.
Yeah, bring an example, Ann.
Okay. I'll be glad to do that.
You're gonna do that for every department or just those who choose to request?
Just the ones who choose to. I don't, I'll use finance as an example. I don't see Lee County Finance having its own logo, but I see Lee County Parks and Rec having theirs, Lee County Library, Lee County Health Department, Emergency Management uses a different lo-, um, has a logo, but I would like to make sure that, you know, we incorporate Lee County Government into that at the same time.
Yeah.
Or, um, that they have to use both seals, um, their seal and the Lee County seal. So that's tied together, that's always tied to Lee County in some shape, manner, or form, is the concept in our head.
Finance, you can just stick a dollar sign on it.
That goes for the tax office.
Okay, we'll bring some examples, some things we're already starting to work on, but I just wanted to, for staff put too much time and effort into it, I wanted to make sure it's something y'all were interested in. Um, you have the various reports attached, um, in the agenda, and then just a couple of things on upcoming meetings. We have a meeting on April third and our commissioners meeting on April seventeenth. April eighteenth is the Lee Soil and Water Conservation District Awards Banquet. If you will please either let Haley know if you want to attend or contact Teresa Nicholson here at Soil and Water. April twenty-first, we have scheduled with the Interlocal Committee meeting with the city. Um, we're still determining the location for that. Or did we confirm here?
For the twenty-first? No, we will be here.
Okay, I'm sorry, the twenty-first, we have confirmed that we'll be here at eleven AM. Then on, uh, April twenty-fourth, it's a busy day. We have the Ag Week kickoff breakfast here at the McSwain Center at eight-thirty, and then we have the Saga All Boards Meeting at nine AM. Or ten, they've moved that back to ten. I'm sorry, that did not get changed in this. That's been moved to ten to make sure we have time to do the breakfast, and that location has not been determined yet.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then on April twenty-fifth, we have the Harris Nuclear Graded Exercise at the EOC, if you're involved in that. And then on April twenty-fifth, that evening, is the Volunteer Dinner at the Enrichment Center. And again, please either let Jordan Husky know by April fourteenth, or let Haley know if you plan to attend that, and she can reach out to Jordan. That's it for me, unless there's any questions.
Any other questions of the manager? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanted to go ahead and mention, um, for our two April meetings, we will be at the Civic Center for both of those.
Okay.
We had a change to that, um, anticipating the Board of Trustees joining us on April third. So we will be at the Civic Center for both April meetings. Um, also, I will be out of the office for the next two weeks, um, after this Friday. So if you need, I mean, you can still call me, but, uh, Whitney or Jennifer would, uh, love to help you out as well during that time.
No, I apologize, I was supposed to tell you all that, I forgot.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, if I may, um, interrupt as well, just briefly about all these dates. I did want to say for the record, um, since the consolidation got moved to consent, and I know the Herald ran a newspaper article, the consolidation will not become effective until July twelfth. That's notated in the resolution, but the memo I had written had July one. We had to, um, internally make some adjustments to that. So just for the record, it's actually July twelfth when the consolidation will occur.
Did you get that, Nancy?
I got it.
Richard?
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you for that, Ed. Nope. Anything else, ma'am?
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner comments, start with Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I want to talk about food trucks. We've had some healthy discussion in the past couple, couple of meetings about that, and, uh, and, and I'm glad we're trying to get it right, because I, I've been dealing with it at work. You know, we talked about it all last week, well, not last week, but the week of our last meeting. Seemed that, like, that took up a lot of the, uh, conversation up there, but, uh, but zoning is a, zoning is a beast, if you ain't ever dealt with it, but, um, but, um, I work with Marshall and, and Amy, and, uh, they're our go-to people in zoning, and, uh, and I respect what they do, and, uh, and I appreciate it if, you know, we, we show them a little respect when they come up here, because it's, uh, it's, it's, like I said, it's a beast, a beast to deal with, and, uh, but I'm ready to put that to rest. I hope everybody got their, what they want, and let's, let's put food trucks to rest. That's all.
Commissioner Reeves?
Just out of, um, this is directed to the manager. Do we have any departments that might make use of the funding Senator Tillis memo?
I apologize, I have not seen that memo.
All right.
Okay.
I'm sure Haley can get you a copy of it.
Okay, thank you. I apologize, I will find out and let you know.
It's got local governments and nonprofits that being made aware that funding is, some federal funding is going to be available for various projects. Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbik? Commissioner Knack? Commissioner Lovick?
Um, just one thing, I had the pleasure of, uh, I did attend the, uh, Moore Regional Hospitals Cancer Center. I told them as soon as I walked in the door, I hate they had to build it, but fortunately for those in need, it's a very nice facility. It's, uh, they've, a lot of thought pr- process went into building that, not just for the patient themselves, but for the caregivers. I mean, anywhere from massages to meditation rooms to, I mean, and this is, uh, it's got a second floor garden, garden you can walk out on. So it's a very nice facility. They did a very good job at that, and, uh, like, there again, I hate anybody has to go there, but, um, it, it has a lot of thought process in mind for the patient and caregivers, so, uh, and thank you for everybody that came out again tonight, giving your, uh, opinion, that matters. We listen. I listen anyway, so, uh, I can't speak for everybody else, I think they listen for you, but, uh, thank you again, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Carver?
Yeah, I'd just like to make an observation on the fact that last couple of meetings, we've had people from nonprofits coming in here to talk to us. So I, I do believe they're trying to encourage us to, uh, accept the fact they're very important in the functioning of, uh, the county as a general, especially those people in need, and that they provide a lot of resources that obviously the county's not in a position to be able to provide on a regular basis. So, um, what I'm hearing them say basically is that they would like to see, um, a codified way of being able to make funding available. Uh, we now have that, uh, we have, uh, we have a, a policy statement that we decided to override the other day, uh, and I understand the, the concepts why, but they're coming because they have questions, and I think it would be good for us to listen to what they have to say and maybe recognize them and encourage them in general. That might be a good thing to do. Um, the only other comment that I have, I, I'm not sure, did we make an appointment for the juvenile detention, uh, that took, that Ariana's had before? I just don't know whether or not they, we have or not.
Are you talking about on the board?
Yeah.
Yes, filling that seat.
Who is it?
Taylor.
Taylor?
Ms. Vorbik.
Okay, good. That's all I have, thank you.
Now, if anyone else has time that they're able to attend, you can put a co-person on there, because unfortunately, their meetings are during my work, so. But I was gonna speak with the outside of this, so.
I just want to say, I hope nobody took the fact that we had questions on food trucks as disrespect, but we can't put it to rest till it comes back to the, to the board. So we have to see what the final.
I'm sorry, Mr. Knack, I didn't.
Oh, I, I hope, I hope nobody took the, any disrespect, because we had questions about food truck ordinances, you know? We had some changes we'd like to see. Um, we can't put it quite to rest yet, we gotta wait till the final review comes back from the, all the changes. But I, I just want to make sure that wasn't the case. Thank you.
We do have a closed session scheduled, so if you would be so kind. Vice Chair.
I move to go into closed sessions per North Carolina General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight point one-one-eight-five and six to discuss a personal matter. Thank you.
Motion been made to go into closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are now in closed session. Thank you. Please take five minutes.